Call the city council meeting to order. I'd invite you all to rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, could we have a roll call?
Cam Collier.
Here.
Craig Koshaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Here.
Wiley Surt.
Here. You all emailed a copy of the minutes from our April 2nd meeting. If you've had a chance to review those, I'd look for a motion to either approve or amend them.
Motion to approve?
All second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes from April 2nd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. First thing we have is a public hearing. I need to make a matter of record that it was publicly advertised. Matter of record first. Motion for that?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second to make the public, uh, the legal notice matter of record. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And I would introduce Adam Mellor and Jerry Setzer, who are here to petition to vacate. Wait a minute, is this a public hearing? We have to cease the, uh, we have to make a motion.
Suspend, suspend the council meeting and...
Moment please.
Why don't I make a motion to suspend the city council meeting?
Second. Motion and a second to suspend the council, city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I'll make a motion to hold the public open for a public hearing.
Second. A motion and a second to open, open a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, Adam, please, and Jerry.
Well, feel so good for now that you did that.
Yes. Tim, Tim gets all excited if we don't do it the right way, you know?
I didn't know that was happening here. First time I've been here.
Where've you been, Jerry?
You're gonna need to come back.
Last time I was in here, there was tellers in here. Well, Herman, right over here, folks. Well, we are here because New Beginnings Church, which is Jerry's church, purchased the parking lot. It was the old GE parking lot. Um, I think as everybody's aware, the, I mean, you've all been by that, it's, there's nothing on the entire parking lot. Um, but there are still five streets and alleys that are going east and west, and I don't know if you've got a copy of this or not, but if you look, we're asking to have the streets and the alleys vacated. This one we're here for.
Don Young, bring it up on the map.
We've got this fancy technology here, Adam.
I'd say GIS or you want the, uh, the Google map, Adam? What one you want?
GIS would probably be a little better because it'll show the, the streets and the alleys.
Okay.
Is it the county's GIS?
Yeah.
This sure shows it too.
Yeah, it does. So as you can see, the streets there and the alleys are going east and west along there. If you go to the, the houses, if you're looking at maps to the left, there's houses all through there, so there's never gonna be streets going clear through because there's already homes, uh, to the left of that. To the right, of course, is where the old GE building used to be and then the railroad track. Um, and there, like, nothing there developed. Um, looking at this, what the church bought is all of this and this little piece right here. So we're asking to vacate these streets and alleys right there. And I don't know what that is. But there's no improvement, uh, to my knowledge, there's no infrastructure in there, is that right?
Yeah. We haven't had time to camera and see.
I understand.
There might be some, some score on the...
Okay. All right. Ultimately, prior request to have a plat that's in there, um, vacated because, as you can see, there's a lot of lots that are through that, again, never having been developed or never developed in recent years. Um, but to start out, we would like to go ahead and at least get all the streets and the alleys vacated to determine how to try to maybe replat some of this.
No, and we're not talking about this alley.
But we're not talking the alley clear to the very bottom, so that little offset here, just to make sure everybody's clear, because we do not want to affect these homes right here, so this alley is not being vacated, just here.
Is San Antonio Suter running this stuff?
In that alley? Yeah. So we're not, yeah, not seeking to vacate that at all. And the, the church wants to use a portion of this, which is why it was bought, actually was for a parking lot, possibly putting up a, a storage unit, a garage or something for the church van and some other things. Uh, but the rest of it, then, we'll have to just see what, what we end up doing with that, but, uh, we'd need to replat that eventually. And talked to Tim, Tim's been very helpful on this, uh, but has, he, he suggested to you that we might wanna go this route instead of doing it all at the same time, so, so our first step is here to get those vacated.
I'd love to see it fill that lot with cars for church.
I was just gonna say...
Then you'd have to build a new church, too.
Didn't give you a good goal that your church would fill.
Yeah. There you go. At least we got parking. That's right, we got parking we never had before. We lent it to the street and for years, we've worked with General Electric, had to provide them a $2 million liability policy in order to use a portion of that lot. Because we've had block parties out there, and of course, when you do that, well, our first giveaway back in 2008, we had over, I think, 560-some families come through to receive free items, and that parking lot was a lot of cars out there.
Yeah. Counsel, any comments?
Has there been any feedback from neighbors or any help?
Technically, the only affected party is New Beginnings because they own all of the contiguous lots. So when the vacation occurs, assuming that council grants it, you basically go to the center line of the streets and the alleys and ownership reverts to the lot adjoining on either side. Since New Beginning owns all of the lots, then all of that street and alley public way that's vacated becomes their property.
So we brought this just to make a motion to...
They basically have an ordinance prepared, uh, so it would be adopted, you vacate it by an ordinance.
Yeah, we have an ordinance.
Um, the one thing that I will point out, if there are utilities, public utilities under the statute, those are not vacated, so obviously, it would be subject to any existing, uh, public utilities. But beyond that, uh, this would be acted as any, act upon by, as any other ordinance would, where you'd have three readings and then, the only difference is that the statute requires that the ordinance actually be recorded and that a copy of it also be provided to the county auditor. So, um, you know, it's, that's the nature of how this is done. So Adam, in his petition, identified the, uh, two streets, uh, in the plat, the original plat of Citizens Third Edition. Uh, one street is Short Street, one street is Indiana Street. Uh, the alleys don't have names, but they're identified by the adjoining lots that, that are on either side of those, so, um, everything runs east-west, and, uh, so the top two alleys and then Short Street and Indiana Street are what is, are being suggested to be vacated.
So, Tim, are we, uh...
At this point, if there's no other questions or comments, then you close the public meeting, go back into, uh, the regular council meeting, and then you can introduce the ordinance.
Okay.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
All second.
I have a motion and let's go with Wiley, second. Close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Motion to reconvene the city council.
All second.
A motion and a second to reconvene the city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And now if someone would like to introduce, we have an ordinance to be presented, it'd be ordinance number 2019-10-4, unless there's any discussion that you need first. Look for a motion to introduce.
I'll make a motion to introduce, or make a motion to place ordinance 2019 dash, what number?
Four.
Four. On its first reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 2019-4 on its short, first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number 2019-4, short title, ordinance of the common council of City Decatur, Indiana, which vacates portions of Short Street and Indiana Street and two east-west alleys, which streets and alleys were dedicated in the plan of Citizens Third Edition, to the City of Decatur, Adams County, Indiana, shown in Plaid Book Two at page 41 in the office of the recorder of Adams County, Indiana.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-4 on its first reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-4 on its first reading, but I have a roll call vote.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley Surt.
Yes. I'll make a motion to, uh, place ordinance 2019-4 on its second reading by short title only.
Second. Motion and a second to place ordinance 2019-4 on its second reading by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number 2019-4, short title, ordinance of the common council of City Decatur, Indiana, which vacates portions of Short Street and Indiana Street and two east-west alleys, which streets and alleys were dedicated in the plan of Citizens Third Edition, to the City of Decatur, Adams County, Indiana, shown in Plaid Book Two at page 41 in the office of the recorder of Adams County, Indiana.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-4 on its second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2019-4 on its second reading, I'd have a roll call vote.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley Surt.
Yes. We wanted to...
Suspend the rules, Tim?
You can, whichever you prefer.
Aye.
Let's move on. I'd say we probably could suspend the rules and get it done.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and make a motion to place ordinance 2019-4 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2019-4 on its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number 2019-4, short title, ordinance of the common council of City Decatur, Indiana, which vacates portions of Short Street and Indiana Street and two east-west alleys, which streets and alleys were dedicated in the plan of Citizens Third Edition, to the City of Decatur, Adams County, Indiana, shown in Plaid Book Two at page 41 in the office of the recorder of Adams County, Indiana.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2019-4 on its third reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-4 on its third reading, I'd have a roll call vote.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley Surt.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2019-4 has been adopted. Jerry?
Yeah, I'd like to ask one quick question. I'm concerned, well, not concerned really, I'd like to know what the zoning is on this property. A few months ago, I went to the Adams County courthouse and I checked on it, it showed the east part of it being industrial and the west part of it showing residential. But then I talked to a person here at City Hall, said, "No, it's all zone residential." Well, then we had this GIS map that said that C1. So I'm curious, what, what is it?
Who would be the authority on that?
It's, the zoning map is shown to be C1, is that correct?
That's what, you show up on the zoning map, the GIS that shows up as C1.
Yeah.
For the whole thing, so. But yet somebody here, not here, but in this building told me that's R1. So I'm, I'm, I'm confused.
I don't know what me. I don't know who, I don't know who it was or what, what they were looking at when they...
I don't, I wasn't, I phoned him on the phone.
Okay.
Actually, a couple of the houses in the south are actually labeled as C1 also. So that, that whole area is C1. So it's all C1, is that what we can all agree on? Want to do a roll call?
The zoning map is gonna say what it is, so. Kurt, you're looking at it, so.
C1. 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 C1.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, yep, yep.
C1.
Thanks, Jerry. Um, next thing up on the agenda is a conflict of interest disclosure for Tim Allman, who does carpet cleaning and furniture cleaning, so we just need to make this a matter of record that Tim has signed his conflict of interest form. Make this matter of record, somebody, some of, of motion and a second to make Tim Allman's matter, uh, conflict of interest a matter of record. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Um, we have an address change and some other facade work for one of the awardees. Melissa, is that you or is that Phyllis? Who was that? Address change and facade work for one of the awardees. Where'd I come up with this? Okay, well, I'll check my email tomorrow, see who sent that to me. Well, let's move on.
Uh... Could, could it have, could it have something to do with Don's award that we wanted to approve? No?
I honestly don't know.
Okay. I don't know, you got me curious. All right. Um, I have an event form. I have an event form for Cinco de Mayo. We did, he did this last year, it's for Juan Contreras out at Chakoty's Mexican Grill. It's going to be on May 4th in the parking lot at Chakoty's. Uh, he has set up time at 2:00 PM, starting at 2:00 PM, or run till roughly midnight. He expects roughly 300 guests. It's a, holding it on private property. I don't know if he really necessarily needed any event form, but I think he wanted to do so because there may be a mariachi band or a band of some sort, and wanted to make sure that the city was all aware of it, and, uh, he has had the police and the fire and the street department sign off. He's not closing any streets, not needing any police protection, anything.
I'll make a motion to approve that of that.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the Cinco de Mayo celebration on, um, May 4th, not the 5th, at Chakoty's. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Don't be partying the 5th.
Patronicity. Melissa, if you all remember when we did Madison Street and through IHCPA, Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority, thank you, I was at a mayor's institute and they got up and spoke and told us about this patronicity, and, uh, someone from Patronicity was there also, and they've partnered with IHCPA. IHCPA has some funds to give away, and we applied for, you could apply for up to $50,000, and then put a plea out to your residents to donate, and for every dollar donated, they matched it up to $50,000. The only hitch to the whole process is that whatever you apply for, you have to raise that, that money. If you apply for $50,000 and you only raise $49,000, you don't get the matching funds. You have to, you have to get it all. Well, we did that for Madison Street, and Decatur came out in a big way, and in 45 days, we raised $72,000. So that was pretty awesome. Well, we found out recently that IHCPA still has funds and Patronicity is still doing their, uh, their crowdfunding project, so, uh, we had a conference call with them, and Melissa, help us out here, what, what kind of dates are they looking at maybe doing something like this?
Well, first of all, our, this time, we would like to go for the Hannah Nutman Park project.
Right.
And, um, we've worked with them, we are, this is an eligible project that matches up with all the guidelines that Patronicity has in place. And again, the, the goal of Patronicity program and IHCPA program is, is create, is creative place making, making those places in your community that will revitalize the space, make it a better utilized space, and make it a vibrant space. So, um, we are eligible with the Hannah Nutman Park project. We're looking at, hopefully, um, early to mid-May, getting our local campaign going. We would have between 30 and 60 days to raise the amount of money, whatever we would like to request, if it's up to the 50, and I think we should definitely track to the 50 again. And again, we have 30 to, 30 to 60 days to raise that, that money. Same drill as, as what we did for the Plaza.
Um, I think it's kind of a no-brainer personally. I mean, uh, I think the most anyone can donate on this is 10,000?
The most any individual can donate, for dollar for dollar match is 10,000. So if the mayor wanted to nominate 20,000, um, he could certainly do so, but the match would only cap out at 10,000.
And for individuals that may wanna buy a paver for $125, they can still buy a paver for $125, but we're gonna get another 125.
That'll match it.
That would match it. Or the same for a $250 paver, or if someone wants to do the, off of one of our sponsor levels, a, a $2,000 flagpole donation.
The same things that the board levels we have in place currently for the Hannah Nutman Capital campaign would carry over into our Patronicity campaign.
Up to the $10,000 level, so it's kind of a no-brainer, it's just a matter of what, do we wanna do 50,000?
And again, the Patronicity program is designed so that this money, um, is the last money in on your, on our project, and with the bids opened at the Board of Works meeting for Hannah Nutman getting ready to start, the timing seems to be, um, really good for us to take advantage of this program.
Any comments?
And it's the time to promote that the construction's starting. Like, I think it's a good timing.
And we will be doing that here in just a few minutes, so.
Yeah. Maybe go for the 50, the match.
opinions over here? Don't look so excited, everyone. This'll work just like last time, right?
It's the same program, the same funding, the same online setup as what we did to the Madison Street Plaza.
Like I said, we've had, we've had people give to Hannah Nutman already, okay? So we can't, we're not like we're looking to go back to those same people that have already given to Hannah Nutman, so we're looking at a whole new pool of people, most likely, okay?
You will be able to donate online like before at the Plaza, a credit card fee will apply. Um, we are able to accept donations in person at City Hall as well, as part of this campaign. Just like what we've got set up through the Hannah Nutman website right now.
Am I right, if they come in and they donate in person at City Hall, there's no fee?
That's correct.
But if they do it online, then, uh, let's say you donate $100, they're gonna, you're really only donating $97, I think, or something.
Or you can choose to go $100 plus.
The fee.
The extra fee.
Right. So for the city to get the $100 match, you would have to really give like 103 or whatever, so, if you do it by credit card, so.
I think that the success of the Madison Street Plaza campaign, um, was, again, it was surprising, it was welcoming, we were grateful, all that, and I, I don't see a reason why, I would recommend that we give this another go because of the community's been so supportive of it.
I'll make a motion that we proceed with a $50,000 Patronicity matching opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second. I have a motion and a second, uh, to proceed with a Patronicity campaign for up to $50,000 with another $50,000 match from IHCPA. All in favor of doing that? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, is Lenny here? Sure. Mike, you come up too, and Chris, you come up, please. We already discussed this at the Board of Works, and this is more of a formality for our friends over here at the media table, but, uh, Deputy Chief Mahan, after how many years?
31.
31 short years of being a police officer here in Decatur, has decided to retire in the middle of June, June 15th. And, and with that, Lenny and I have had, uh, a lot of conversations about replacing Mike as the deputy chief, and, uh, one of Lenny's biggest things he wanted to have in that, in that role was make sure that it's someone that he can personally work hand-in-hand with, and Lenny and Chris Bright worked as detectives together for five years. He knows he had, he knows he can work with him, and he thinks that the, uh, Chris will be a good person for the morale of the, the rest of the staff, carry on just like Mike did. And with that, uh, I announced at the Board of Works meeting that we'll be, we'll be appointing Chris Bright as the next deputy chief here in Decatur, take the place of Mike Mahan, uh, June 15th. In the meantime, between now and June 15th, Chris will be shadowing, uh, Mike, and, uh, also, we're going to take some time then to replace Chris's position. Chris will still be working as a detective, uh, until a future date, which I would have to say probably maybe 30 days beforehand, or, or, no, excuse me, Mel, Lenny, talk, go ahead and talk about this, because we're shorthanded.
Correct. Um, you know, we have two guys going to the academy, uh, from May till, uh, September, and then there's a potential two officers, uh, going through the process of Fort Wayne PD. Um, and with Mike retiring, that's gonna leave us another officer short, so, um, I would like to, um, uh, fill that position when our patrol duties are, are covered by the city, because at that time, we're gonna have, uh, people wanna take days off, vacations, so, um, um, me being a former detective, I can help out in the detective division, and also, uh, assign some, uh, cases to officers that are interested in wanting to be a detective. So we can evaluate, um, those officers and then come back to the Board of Works, and then, uh, we can go from there.
Okay. Any comments from anyone? If not, I'd just like to congratulate Chris on the appointment, and also thank Mike Mahan for, uh, the great job he's done over the last 31 years. He had hair when he started. Anyone, wanna say anything, Chris?
Thanks for your confidence in me, and I like, um, like I said, I'll tend to send, um, I'll look at your expectations, and, um, be a good team, I think, we'll move forward.
Yep.
We'll, uh, progress forward.
We have a good team as is, and, and I expect it to continue. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Mary Byer, who's a regular at our meetings, is going to give us a little presentation tonight. Um, it is, help me out, Catherine Fisk.
Thank you.
It's a wall dog, wall dog, that's it, I couldn't think what it was. How many wall dog projects have you participated in?
Me, her, mine, none yet.
Oh, we hope to, huh?
Yes, I, um, my parents live in a town where the wall dogs have visited, not only once, but twice, and there's two different aspects of the wall dogs. You can hire individual muralists, and this is all under the assumption that the Great Wall of Decatur on first, um, on the street...
The Great Wall.
...will be a welcoming sign to the people who are coming to town visiting. The wall dog group though, they have, you can either hire, um, individual muralists or several that come into a town, it takes four or five days and they've completed a project, a mural, um, or you can host an event. Now, or you can do both. Um, I'm suggesting hiring a singular muralist to come into the town. Their focus is on the history of the city. Now, when I moved to Decatur, I was completely confused most of the time because people would refer to different buildings. Oh, turn left at the Niblet Building. Well, I don't know where that is. Or the Schaefer Building. And Decatur is ingrained in its history, it loves it, and I think this group would be a perfect marriage. Um, they're professional sign painters, but they do events, they're hired out as muralists. Um, they, I, as you can see from some of their artwork, now, this is from Kiwanee, Illinois. They focus on the history. This one's from the Fire's newspaper article. This one here is from Fred Francis's Palace. He's an interesting guy, I could go on all about him all day long. But they, or they do welcome signs. The wall dogs themselves, there are thirty communities that have hosted wall dog events, some of them multiple times, like Kewanee. If you've ever been to Shipshewani, they have wall dog murals there as well. There's a total of eight-hundred murals painted in fourteen different countries. They've been doing this for twenty-six years, and there's three-hundred-and-forty wall dogs rolling away. Now, starting off with just one wall dog coming to Decatur, and I see this as a fantastic educational opportunity, not only for the students, but for other artists living in the area. And, you know, a lot of having them come to town, they would need housing, a place to stay while they're completing these murals. We all want to see the artist walk, succeed. I mean, this would be great word-of-mouth, especially with a network this big, visiting all these different communities that focus on art.
Well, tell us how, okay, are you saying we would probably want to do an individual muralist?
I was saying individual for the first one. Now, when everybody, you know, when different businesses, organizations see what they are capable of doing, hosting an event in two years, because you need a minimum of two years to prepare. And I think it would be fantastic to have it go on during a sculpture tour. I mean, you could go around town, all these different muralists would be working. The community is invited to help with the wall dog group during an event. You just show up with a paintbrush and they'll put you to work. With the individual muralists, which I'm suggesting tonight, they are bonded and insured. And so they would prefer not to have people help them during their, you know, during their painting. It takes three or four days to have a mural painted in a town.
By an individual, they can paint the whole thing in three or four, really?
Yeah. Sometimes they have two come in, depending on the size of the wall and the mural that you want to have painted on there. Now, it would take, the artist doesn't allow you, or the city, to choose the content. Now, if you want a sign welcoming the city, you know, that's great, then they're gonna show, you know, welcome to Kewanee historic downtown. And you may not know this, but it is the hub capital of the world, and there's two little things there. But they come up with their own design, and they present it, and they'll show you what they're gonna do. But it would be, everybody's talking about the Arts Commission coming in and taking the guest work away from the city council members. This would be great, you know, it would be easier, I guess. You don't have to have it painted directly on the wall either. Sometimes we have panels that they hang up. And there's extra cost involved in that as well. But I think a lot of having a wall dog come to our town, to learn from them, especially with the society grants that are available, the potential for artist housing, having sign painters come to our town, we have societies that will need some work done. We have grants available. It creates sustainable living for the artists who are living in the artist's loft. But this would be the first step in that direction. I foresee it. And who knows, maybe, I, I'm compelled to go to, they're having a wall dog event in Olenee, Illinois, in East Sunny Creek. And that's four and a half hours from here, up near Bloomington. And I'm gonna take the family, go see what it's about, check it out in further detail. But I'd like you to consider having a wall dog come to town, just out of education. I would be thrilled to learn from professional sign painters how it's mapped out.
Do they study the history of Decatur?
Yes, they will study the history of Decatur. They will work closely with the Historical Society, go through our old newspapers, Decatur Daily Democrat. They do their homework. They research. And they come back with beautiful images, as you can see, that focus on the history of the town. And if you've ever made it up to Shipshewani, check out their murals as well.
Mary, do you have any kind of indication of a range of cost?
I have contacted a couple other cities, and an individual mural is anywhere between ten to twenty thousand dollars, depending on what can be given in time. Say, paint, housing, food donation, you know, tent. There's a lot of planning and preparation to having a wall dog come to the area. Public logistics.
And I would think the length of time for research of what's going to be done would play into that too.
Yes, the wall aside. The prices do vary, but from what I found, it's anywhere from ten to twenty thousand dollars in
And it lasts how long?
Four to five days.
No, but hey, once it's up?
It's up. And
For how long?
The maintenance, yes, the eventual maintenance. They can be done locally. But they usually seal them up, and they last for a while, a long while. Wall dogs, the term wall dogs, came from a group of sign painters. It's the, it's the, let's see, I can't find it right here. The wall dogs are a group, the wall dog movement. Anyway, it stems from the nineteenth century, and they were referred to, murals of old were called wall dogs. They would be sealed like you were talking about on the cinder block. Or they could be on a sign that could be removed, moved around as well.
I think like, you know, the one that was painted out here for a hundred and fifty, it's still
Still really there.
Looks, I mean, it's really not in bad condition. So I think it's gonna last for a while. Now, I appreciate the research you did in this, and correct me if I'm wrong, but like, the events themselves, it's a competition, basically. You're applying for them, because they're all descending upon your community. And they're not doing just typically one, they're doing multiple murals during that timeframe. So it's a big deal, but it's not free. You have to pay for all that still. It's just that they come together and have a giant
Right.
wall dog party.
But you said there could be just one.
Right.
Yes, just one, that's what I suppose.
Because even if we tried to get into this, I mean, we could be applying for multiple years before we might be able to land in an event. And then it's gonna be a much more expensive proposition, because it's not gonna be just probably one, it'll be multiple.
Well, it wouldn't be solely on the city to pay for it. It would be the individuals who own the buildings that they are paying for.
And they want something on it.
Now, with the thought improvement grant, I could see maybe some of that later on down the line, because it takes two years to plan this event out. Allocating some of that potential funds for the wall dogs. That's just a thought, and that's pie in the sky right now. But to get the ball rolling, I would like to see them come to our town. I would like to glean from them and see how they are.
I could see also Decatur Main Street, now we'd have to go in front of the board, but I could see them having a real role in this planning and preparation and so forth as well.
And from what I gather, that's the direction, and maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but from what I gathered from the city council meeting, Board of Works, and presentation of Decatur Main Street, they're leaning in the direction of a sign or a mural. And I thought, well, I've always enjoyed this trip, but when I go home and, or when I've gone home and visited, I enjoy looking at the murals. And everywhere you go, there's a different aspect of the town that you didn't realize was there, you know, or the history of it.
First home?
What?
Where are you from?
I grew up in Rockford, but they moved to Kewanee, Illinois.
Oh, okay.
And Kewanee, Illinois has hosted two separate wall dog events. And, I mean, people still talk about it for years and years to come. I was looking at some of their testimonials online. And that was one of their favorite memories, and they loved going around town, saying, hey, I helped with that. Hey, I remember when they came to town, and it was a lot of fun, you know, and here, it's still here, and it looks beautiful, and it's changed the look of our city.
And they have a webpage?
They do. Just look up wall dog murals, and
Google it, huh?
You will have a whole list.
I would suggest maybe tonight that I ask council to maybe, in your spare time, in the evenings, whatever, Google wall dogs, take some, read more, a little bit more about it. I don't know what the first step would be, I mean, as far as if you want to hire an individual one. Do they, if you go through the wall dog company or whatever, and they assign an artist?
I've been in communication with the person who runs the Facebook page. They're all workers. They send out feelers to see if anybody would be interested in what their availability is. Then the second step would, step would give them dimensions, where you want it, and then they can give you a quote after they've researched your town. But they, there has to be a commitment to it, and they would draw sketches. Then you tell them what you'd want, if this is the direction you would like to go. Is it, if I'm welcoming people to downtown Decatur, do you want to focus on a specific aspect of what that building used to be? I guess that's something they can listen to or disregard entirely. But they're always beautiful, and they're always based on the history of the city.
Well, and tonight, we've got the president of Decatur Main Street here in our room, so, you know.
I think this is helpful for us, because we think, because this wouldn't happen until next year. Right, yeah. Well, it might get it done to later on. But I think it helps us understand, if we're gonna pursue a mural in 2020, what we need to be prepared for from a budgeting perspective. Or what portion of that we want to play from the city side.
Right. And also depending on how, how the community steps up to it too, as well.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that you'd do it in 2020, because I'm just looking here, they said that they're already committed to it.
That's the event, that's the event.
Okay, so an individual, you might be able to
An individual, we'd probably land, because there's three-hundred-and-forty of them. And I know there's several that will be in the area for the Illinois event. And that might be a good place to make connections, if that's something that the city is interested in doing.
Since you're going over there, maybe you should invite them to come over and see the sculpture tour and scope out the city of Decatur.
Yes, I completely agree. Are there any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks for doing the groundwork. It's awesome, yeah. Really appreciate it.
It's great. Thank you.
We'll talk more. Okay. Lenny, I just found Chris Bright's information. Totally forgot about that. Can you give us to you guys if you'd like to have a copy of what Chris has done in the past? I want to talk just a little bit more about Hannah Nutman, if I could. I'm gonna read most of this, because I wrote it in between all my meetings today, and hopefully I say it with clarity. The Hannah Nutman project goes all the way back, I would say, beginning in February of 2012, when the Decatur and Adams County Park and Rec Department created a five-year master plan. Part of that plan was to focus on making Hannah Nutman Park a better facility. The plan indicated that the park's strengths were that it was a good-sized park, and that residents very frequently visit the park for baseball and softball games. However, the same plan indicated that the park had several major liabilities, including that its layout or configuration could be better utilized. The facilities, in other words, the restrooms and concessions, were inconveniently located and outdated. And that the parking had major safety issues, along with not enough parking. So we fast-forward three years from 2012 to 2015. And our city council passed Resolution 2015-7. This was a resolution, this, this resolution was part of the efforts of our attempt at becoming a Indiana Stellar Designated Community. The short title of the resolution, 2015, reads as such. "Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which expresses council's support of numerous capital projects to be undertaken within the next five years, including projects identified in the city's Stellar Strategic Community Investment Plan, and which commits city funds for such capital projects." Without reading the entire resolution, I'll skip to the last paragraph and read just a portion of it. It states, "The Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana hereby commits $2,500,000 to the city revenues toward the capital projects identified in Exhibit A. Attached heretofore, which amount shall be budgeted and spent over the next five years from various city funds, as approved by the Common Council commencing in 2015." And here's a copy of that page where we signed it. And here is Exhibit A that was attached to it. And you've all seen this. We've showed this at many council meetings. Everything that's in the green, are projects that was put on this list, and we've done them. We've checked them off. Look at all the green on there. The, the projects that are yellow are projects that we are currently doing. And the project right here in the blue is the Hannah Nutman Project. So it was all, it was all part of that. And it's kind of funny that even the original cost estimate for Hannah Nutman was 2.3 million. So then let's move on. Moving to late 2016, and city council authorized Brett Miller, Miller-Lancaster Bank, to prepare a plan for a fee not to exceed $25,000 for a new design configuration of Hannah Nutman's ball fields. At a council meeting, I suggested that a Northern Adams County Capital Campaign, in which all residents of Decatur with a Decatur address would be contacted to help support such a capital campaign project. Reading from our minutes, from our January sixteen, 2018 minutes, Melissa Norby, Community Development Director, shared that the Greater Decatur Committee had met on Monday evening, January fifteenth, and decided there was a need to raise $1 million for the Hannah Nutman Park renovation. The group was asking that night for $20,000 to be, to be put toward marketing of the capital campaign. Greg Cauchy made a motion to release not more than $20,000 budgeted for marketing toward the Hannah Nutman Park renovation project, seconded by Scott Murray, in the absence of Mr. Collier. The motion was passed. Shortly after that January meeting, Loft House Films was hired to help with the marketing efforts of the upcoming Hannah Nutman Capital Campaign. So that takes us from 2012, when it was first briefly discussed in a park five-year plan, to 2018. And in May of 2018, the Hannah Nutman Capital Campaign was kicked off by way of newspaper and social media. Pictures of old were posted in the newspaper and on social media. Videos from various individuals in the community were also shared on social media, explaining the need for the project and asking for the public's support. We've been encouraging businesses, individuals, and families to donate to this project. I see the project as something our residents can buy a piece of, so to speak. So many of us have either played ball at Hannah Nutman, or our kids have, or our grandkids have, or our neighbor kids have. And our motto on the campaign is, "It takes teamwork to build a community." So how have we responded as a city so far? Since early this year, flip of the calendar in 2019, we've been sitting just shy of $600,000 in donations. However, recently, that's kind of started to pick up again, and we're now just a little over $600,000. While $600,000 is a lot of money, I think you would be surprised by the numbers of where the $600,000 comes from. Now, I'm gonna share some of that. To date, eleven months into the capital campaign, seventeen businesses have donated to the capital campaign. Fifty-nine individuals or families have donated or bought pavers. This is the, this is the one that gets me. Of those fifty-nine families or individuals that have donated, thirteen of them are from out of town. People that used to live here and moved away and wanted to give back to the community. Do the math, how many local people have given. Twelve donations came from various organizations, like fraternal organizations, sororities, fundraisers from the Decatur Police Department, the teachers at Northwest Elementary, youth ball teams, high school class reunions. Decatur Girl Softball has donated twice. St. Mary's Fall Fest, and the proceeds from the Decatur Mercy Beatle Concerts, and the Paul McCartney Ticket Raffle. In a nutshell, that's it. So tonight, I want to announce that the end of the Hannah Nutman Capital Campaign is going to be July 31st. We have a little over three months left in the capital campaign, about a hundred days. So with the patronicity campaign that we discussed earlier, this may be a great time for the other for the other 10,000 and some odd people to donate. In doing so, your $25 becomes $50, your $500 donation becomes $1,000, and so on. We don't have a firm date for the patronicity campaign just yet, but Melissa will have that soon. But either way, I would encourage Decatur residents to give some serious thought about supporting our project. The project's going to happen whether our citizens donate or not. We will break ground on construction in mid-June, and we will have boys and girls playing ball there in just over a year from now. So tonight, I invite all Decatur area residents to ask themselves if they or their family has ever benefited from Hannah Nutman Park. If you have, I then ask that during these next 100 days or so of the capital campaign, to consider buying in and joining Team Decatur. Every donation makes a difference. We've had donations as small as $5, and that's fine. I really believe that everyone that has donated thus far has a sense of pride about helping their community. I would ask that you please consider how you might help. Thanks. I just wanted to make that statement tonight, and, so I put it in writing and read it. The next thing, I guess, would be the department head reports, and I'm going to call on Jeremy specifically, because I think he has a couple things to report.
Last meeting, you approved the Legion's Park Restroom Project and the wall project over here, first and third, both projects have been awarded to the contractor. The Legion Restroom has been demoed last Friday, and they will be digging footers, unfortunately not to wait, pouring footers at both locations. Once the footers are in, they will more focus on the restroom building to get that up and go on to a certain point before they start on the wall. So that's all good news, that's progress. The sound system at Madison Street Plaza is very near completion. Talked with Chris Caston from Innovator, and he's down to just some final calibrating, some final tuning. But a short old training session.
Speakers are in there, right? They're setting, they're in the plaza?
The actual, we can go Friday, the sound system will go on for a few hours. So he did, Chris himself wants to come back and do the final calibration and testing, and then go over the train, do the dump program and such, so.
Okay.
The airways started this week, so the eggs are out, picking up the airways, and everything's going pretty good.
And parking lot over here?
Oh, yes. I've been talking with.
Chad?
Jack Johnson from Ideal, and they're looking to have the plaza, or not the plaza, but the wall project completed by the end of June, or towards the end of June, or the bottom, or excuse me, the top, of course. The week of June 3, they're planning on working in the parking lot, back here, getting everything brought up to grade, and laying asphalt at the end, paving, landscaping, and such to follow. So hopefully by mid-June, early end of June, all that will be completed in a batch. So I'd be very happy with progress of the project, and everything's coming along really, really nicely, so. It'd be a huge addition to the plaza, having all the landscaping, the parking lot, everything, everything.
Thank you. Yeah, that's going to be, that'd be great to have that. Parking lot.
I do have a picture of it that you can, you can send you guys, and give this kind of a little reminder of what the layout of this is.
Yep, do, please. So, yeah, it'll be a parking lot sooner than we had imagined.
A lot sooner than, than anticipated. When I first started talking, it was going to be closer October.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Great, so that's great. Lonnie?
Um, just had our physical juries last week, and three individuals successfully completed the physical part of it and the ready exam. Trent Bussey just completed a week-long disruptive development training in Jasper, Indiana, and has given us four trainers on the department, so our training is getting a lot better. And I am very happy with Detective Wright, working beside me as our, my number two, so I look forward in June to make that transition easy for him, so we can continue to get things moving forward.
Lonnie, how many are on the reserve again?
Uh, we have five right now.
Okay, thank you.
But people have inquired about it, but only have enough for this year, I might want to come work on it for next year, so. Might be used back, back in the 90s when I was on, about 10, that's my goal.
Less?
Nothing tonight.
Kevin?
More works waiting, we'll send a contract, closing for the water.
Kurt?
Done. You're going to see this truck all over Jefferson Street. We leave that for a couple months here, and you need to clean the sewers. Couple quick before.
Look at this.
After. So they were 50% plugged, and now they're clean like that.
That's cool.
So we, today we've camered 3,320 feet of sewers, and cleaned it up to kind of clean it up.
Jeremy, do you have anything else?
I forward that email to you, all of you. About the issue, so you should have a lot of details.
Mr. Carbot, you're all good. Melissa?
I have a couple things. I'm a reminder about the Mercy Beatle, on sale with that concert, that is the one today, May 8, it's coming up pretty quickly, or they're going to have, we have a federal credit union that our partner is putting on. Tickets are available online. We also have a handful of tickets available to sell at City Hall if you are not in queue or in line. As well, as I mentioned, the Paul McCartney raffle ticket, we've got those available here at City Hall as well. The draw is holding on May 4, so that is coming up. And I wanted to remind everybody, and I hope you're watching, that we're about in the middle of the day, 30 days of recycling, where we are doing a little bit of shaming about what's happening with people's recycling and how, what they're doing at Elm Street. This is today's, as you'll see, there's a bathtub, and a number one plaque that's in, this is not okay, and we're trying to remind people every day, the dews and dumps for the 30 days every week. Again, the recycling crew, which the State Department has been really good about, keeping pictures every day and getting it seen more.
We're, for some reason, haven't warmed up the problem that drastically worse. If it continues, what will happen, if it's continued, I don't know, it's very, very humid for everyone, but it should not be abused like it's being.
It's not a, it's not a dump. Yeah, it's not a dump.
I did buy a camera system to put on the building. It's not been installed yet, but we're going to have to get this under control.
Would we be, would it be okay to post signs that, anybody violating the?
Well, you could, you could do that.
Give them for littering or something?
You post signs once you have the camera up, that surveillance cameras are monitoring use of the bins, and the second thing would be that you can, you know, potentially cite somebody for littering.
So something has changed the last several months. We, we never had an issue like we have now. There's always been a little bit of mix-up, you know, you get a number two, and you know, a long ban and stuff, but nothing, nothing compared to what it's been like here the last few months.
Okay.
The last thing I wanted to share with you is that the final Decatur Artist and Craft Market of the winter season was on Saturday. They open November to April at Riverside Center, lots of local artists and lots of local crafts. Share and sharing is pretty filling, take care of running that for the community, the great community event they do, that still is involved here. And this season, they decided once again to donate all the proceeds from the mark, from the Artist and Craft Market to the Hannah Nutman Project. And this season, they were able to donate $3,761.
Wow, yeah.
To the Hannah Nutman Project. So we're grateful to these ladies that volunteered, we're grateful that they've put on a great event for the community. They're averaging anywhere between 50 and 75 vendors per month, and this is once a month, at Riverside Center. So a great event for the community, and we're grateful that they are keeping the community in mind when they're putting on a show.
That's great. Council members' comments. Phyllis?
Hi, just want to congratulate you on our office will be moving upstairs to City Hall next week, we're going to start moving.
The clerk treasurer's office.
Yes.
What moves into the clerk treasurer's office? Eventually, the wall, the back wall of Kurt's office will be moved back a little bit, and then Melissa will get out of the lobby finally and have an actual office. Anything else from council? Tim? You had nothing else? Make some claims?
I have to refuse myself, because both of us want to.
Because she's going to pay you something, huh?
I'll make a motion to pay the claims.
Second, have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion.
Thank you.
Motion adjourned.
Second, have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.